...planning board, welcome. As you all are aware, we have a short agenda tonight, so we're going to be short and sweet and keep everything moving along here. Hopefully, we have all of the applicants ready, willing, able to come to the table. Ryan, let's start with you.
Question.
We'll start with a roll call. I'm sorry, Ryan, if you're taking that. We'll start with a roll call to the left. We got a lady, Carol.
Carol.
Warren Lee, President.
John Friedel, President.
Grace Morrissey, President.
Donald Smith, President.
Paul Clutchy, President.
Keith Lightball, President.
Joe Hayes.
Is it supposed to say President or something?
I think it's something.
Ray Sokoloff, President.
James Ryman, President.
Josh Verlun is absent. His tech, he had emailed me, stuck in New York City at a meeting. Okay, so we're going to jump right into the agenda. We have a lot line revision, Don Lowes' home review subdivision, 521 Route 28. We have a memo here with reference to that. I am referring to that November 14 memo from Jim Frybender, subject lot line revision. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
And does anybody need to see a copy of the subject map? Okay, so again, moving right along here. Ask your question. I'm going to read the memo. Ask your question. I've reviewed the proposed lot line revision dated September 11th for a filed undeveloped subdivision known as ridu 208. Ridu 2008? Ridu 208?
2008.
Okay, 2008. Located at 521 Route 28. The earlier 200...
That was the date of it, 2000.
Okay, the earlier 2006 subdivision of nine lots is now proposed to be reduced to five lots and eliminates the filed proposed town road, which remains bonded to permit development and issuance of a building permit. At the August meeting, the planning board endorsed the proposed lot line revision, which provides for elimination of four lots in the public roadway. The map, as it now shows, a flag lot arrangement with a driveway easement. Upon filing, the town board can act on release of the road bond of $292,000 upon certification of the proposed, of the approved lot line revision now submitted. The proposed lot line revision will increase the lot size consistent with 220-23. All resulting revised lots are five or more acres. The two existing undeveloped lots are covered by 220-28. As addressed in the August meeting, the entire process of signature and filing must therefore be transactioned in three steps. I'll give you a copy of this if you have it for your process. Approval of the lot line revision by the planning board with conditions that the town board approved the release of the bond and the offer of session. Second, the filing of the approved lot line revision. Third, the submission of a bond release application to the town board. The revised map now before the board is a form for review and approval with the condition as noted. Seeker is complete. The recommendation, it is recommended that the board approve the lot line revision subject to signatures by owners and payment of all fees. While signatured by the board and the property owners, the applicant must then submit the filing documents with the county clerk and obtain the filing receipt, live or in page, for submission to the town board and apply for release the subject bond or letter of credit. Subject, which is a letter of credit. The subject loss, the subject lot, L-O-T, should not be transferred prior to the town board action on the bond. Pursuant to 188-10-C, there is no requirement for UCPV, which owns the county planning board referral on New York State D E O through permitting agricultural asset statement. Seeker would be completed in 2008 or public hearing. The board did not address a public hearing requirement at the August meeting. We waived, we basically amongst ourselves voted on that we waived the public hearing. So, does the applicant have any questions?
No.
And do you have any comments you want to make before I go around?
Really, just, it wasn't a waiver. Lot line revisions don't require public hearing. The board can attend when the thing happens.
I'm correct, right. Right, so we'll start with Carol. Do you have any comments on the...
Yes.
Warren?
No.
John?
No.
Keith?
No.
Joe?
No, thank you.
Right. Mr. Brennan, do you have any comments you want to make?
I have my own.
Do you have any?
I have.
Okay, Ron. You'll read one. So, when they read the recommendation, recommended board approved the lot line revision, subject to signature. So, we should have a motion to approve this lot line revision dated, this map, which is dated September 11, 2017. So, I need a motion from the board to approve this lot line revision of this map of September 11, 2017.
With the conditions?
With the condition as set forth in paragraph four, November 14, 2017, a memorandum from Jim Frybender.
Chairman, I make a motion, the board approved the lot line revision subject to signatures by owners and payment of fees. I'll submit it.
All right, I have it. Motion by Keith Lightball. Do I have a second? Second by Ray Sokoloff, all the favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Ron, you've been, we've given you permission to discuss any comments or concerns with Jim if he had any during the process. I'm sure he can guide you through it. This is something that all of us are a little, you know, new at, so I'm sure if you have any questions.
You can refer.
Very helpful. We will not have a total accounting for what your fees are for a revision, so if you want to contact me, reach out to me or email me, I will follow up with you on it and we'll vote.
Excellent.
Jim, how many maps should we provide to, what did we say, seven maps?
Three over the town.
Usually it's me to go to the county. None of them should be in my lot. And then if it's three or four, I'm not sure what the county particular, one for the assessor, one for the building department, one for the planning board.
These.
Well, you'll want whatever, whatever you want. Well, so I need one my lot, one my lot.
Yeah.
And just my surveyor.
Are these owners still record owners, Lois, Barry, and Ron? It's a signature on here. So, Barry, it's on here, so you might want to make sure. I've got that on there, you know.
Oh, they used to come, what was to become this, what became this.
Okay, so you might want to make sure that whatever, whatever is a correct map, the signature is accurate when we bring it in, because if there's a signature missing, we can't.
It was a blow up of the county.
Right, so you have to sign, we have to, you have to sign it first. And if you want to hold off on the date stamp so that we can then make sure that we all sign it, you have 60 days to file it once we have signed it. So, you don't want to have a list up there. I had that unfortunate issue when I held the map too long. Looked at it, it was all my money, and found out that I held it too long.
Oh, no, we planned to do this.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just give it my experience.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
You know what, we're going to...
This is, okay, this is yours.
Take it with you. But you know that, just have your surveyor review it, make sure that you're packed, you're ready to go.
Excellent.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the county maps have to be a D or bigger. Your surveyor should know what the...
Okay, all right.
Okay, here we are, moving right along in the agenda. We now have the subdivision Shaft Road LLC for a 10-lock clustered residential subdivision land located in the RA zoning district along 8591 Shaft Road and South Town Road. We are going to jump into the secret determination, right?
Good night.
Let's do that, right. We have a mistake on you. We don't have secret, okay, we have a... Good evening. How are you doing?
Let you know on our way out.
Let us know on your way out, okay, well, we're here to follow the process. All right, as you see, I, we need me out here, the, we all have a little bit to review it.
Yes, we did.
You have enough. I'm sure you don't have any questions, so I'm going to jump right into it. Okay, this is a memo from Jim Frybender dated November 18th, subject preliminary plat, give you that 10-lock open space subdivision Shaft Road. At the October planning board meeting, the board continued to review the draft negative deck, particularly with respect to the comfortability of the open space plan. The board examined the reports of the diagnosed environment, environmental, as well as then extensive public participation record. The board completed its findings with respect to SEAF Part 2 and 3, which was adopted and filed by the board upon finding that proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Paragraph 2, as discussed at the workshop and confirmed by the board's attorney, the board is required to set a separate public hearing on a preliminary plat. The board referred to plat to Sterling Environmental for preliminary plat and engineering review. The report was received dated November 15. Did I send you that November 15? From Sterling setting forth 10 items to be addressed. In each case, those items are requirements of the final plat review as set forth in 188-13, 188-25. The applicant has, however, agreed to include those items in a revised preliminary plat for hearing purposes, except for obvious exceptions, which are required to be conditioned in the final plat approval. The plat dated 7/28/17 is in form of a preliminary plat hearing for consideration of compliance with the town zoning and subdivision regulations, as opposed to secret issues. The board has received the Elster County Planning Board Report of Recommendations, which identified five standard code compliance issues of advocates of all subdivisions. These code requirements are implemented in the final subdivision plat review. It is, however, recommended that the revised plat, so dated, be referred again to the county planning board, should they wish to raise any new accounting consideration. It is recommended that the board should set a preliminary plat public hearing through the summer meeting for the revised documentation only to the county planning board to complete the earlier filing. All right, so we also have that letter, which is dated, the Sterling Environmental letter, November 15th, yeah.
Sorry, dear Mr. Clutchy, your request, they have reviewed the application materials and make the following observations. The following items were received, site plan drawings, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP. We also reviewed previously submitted application documents on file with the town to understand the scope of the project. A short form environmental assessment, the negative declaration dated September 19th. We provide the following comments on the SWIP and the site plan drawings. The SWIP, document appears limited to the draft text. Appendices, supporting calculations, and a complete notice of intent have not been furnished. The final document stamped by a professional engineer with certification C Section 7 completed should be provided to the town. Site plan drawings, the plan should be certified by a professional engineer, licensed surveyor. The access driveway to Lot 10 passes over the Delaware Aqueduct and under the central Hudson Gas and Electric overhead electric. Additional approvals from New York City, DEP, and Central Hudson Gas and Electric may be required prior to construction. Please clarify the nature of the fire suppression equipment to be provided for Lot 10. The wetland crossings depicted on Sheet 5 will be subject of permits by others. Permit applications submitted to the New York State DEC and/or United States Army Corps of Engineers and jurisdictional determination should be provided to the town. Correspondence with the New York State Department of Conservation and the United States Army Corps of Engineers regarding the wetland boundaries should be furnished to the planning board. Driveway access to Lot 3 connects to an existing driveway on tax parcel SBL 93.3-1-27 owned by the town of Gardner. The drawings indicate there is a 50-foot existing right-of-way to be relocated for the proposed driveway. Such should be confirmed. Details for concrete truck washout should be provided. The 100-foot T-shaped driveway turnout for Lot 10 appears to include the driveway accessing the garage. The homeowner is likely to use the lot drive for parking, potentially hindering the function of the turnout. The proposed driveway perpetual care and maintenance agreement should be provided. Please contact us should you have any further questions.
Did you respond to this in writing?
No.
Did you want to...
You can comment.
Do you want to respond verbally now and then follow up with a letter, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, there's just a couple of items really that we could talk about now. I can follow up with the letter.
Yeah, I think there'd be...
Well, you said, you know, missing the calculations. As it turns out, that our disturbance for the whole subdivision is under five acres, so we actually don't have to do the stormwater pollution part of the plan. We only have to do a soil erosion settlement control, which the SWIP, it's a little confusing to the state what you actually have to file when you're in that category, which I'm trying to get clarification of. So, we prepared that draft report, really just explaining what the procedures would be for, you know, for the soil erosion settlement control. And the soil erosion settlement control details are on the plan. But because we're under five acres, we don't have to do the stormwater pollution treatment.
All right, so let me, let me ask you this, though, Dave, my knowledge, you have 10 lots.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that with the above-ground septic systems and the lot...
Well, they're not all above ground. And that's where the difference came up, is originally we just assumed that and calculated the disturbance, it's close to six acres. But then actually we have all the data and size the septic system. A lot of them are in ground and quite a bit smaller. That reduced the total disturbance. Plus, you've got to remember one lot's already built on. That's really nine new building lots.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it came down to like four plus acres. We have a little sketch we'll submit showing the disturbance. We had, we did the conservation analysis, you know, we did a year ago, whenever, we did a disturbance plan, a little sketch showing the disturbance, and that's where we assumed, we were using big areas for all the septic.
Right, right.
And that put us over five acres.
Right, and that's why I'm...
I revised that sketch, but I didn't resubmit it.
Okay.
But I will, showing that we're under five acres.
Need to resubmit.
And I'll do that when I respond to this letter. Were you drawing a distinction between the above-ground, in-ground system? Sure. Just by way of size, or was it... Yeah, well, no, in-ground system, you know, you know anything about septic systems, there's a couple of components. You have the septic tank, which is pretty standard on all systems. It's a settling tank, and then the groundwater comes out of that and goes into a soil absorption field. And what we're talking about is either the in-ground soil absorption or fill. The fill requires a big footprint, spread out over a large area. The in-ground's more smaller. Was that? I'm asking if there was, I said, I've got a degree in engineering and I've... I know, I said, I explained it for the whole board, too. My question was, were you drawing a distinction between the soil disturbance as to the size of, as to the systems themselves or just the overall size, is my question. You're saying they're smaller because they're in-ground, so it's less disturbance. You weren't making a distinction, you weren't saying that some of it didn't qualify for disturbance, because you seem to be drawing a distinction between some types of systems rather than just saying they're smaller footprints. I just wanted, I was just asking.
Smaller footprints, what you're referring to.
Yeah, just smaller footprint, you know.
Okay. Okay, so...
Trying to learn something. No, I know. I just, you know, a lot of people don't understand septic systems, so it's one foot, but they think it's a tank and that's it. It's a little, this slows on.
Okay, so you want to continue, Barry?
Yeah, so that was one item. The other one, it was a question of the fire suppression system at the, at the lot ten.
How about the second, Barry?
You jumped over. Yeah, let's talk about the access driveway, the access driveway lot ten passes over the Delaware Aqueduct.
Yes, we know that. We have to contact both of those agencies and get clearance for the driveway.
You haven't done that.
I don't, I haven't. I'm not sure if Mike and Maria all have. I don't know if it happened in.
It's in the process. Okay, okay.
But we recognize that, you know, and the only other thing that, you know, you raised a question of, which I don't have an answer, is the fire suppression for Lot 10. I thought that had to do with the length of the driveway, and I kind of remember that coming up a long time ago. And I don't know the answer to what's required for that. And I think that's a town.
Correct.
Code requirement?
Correct.
Yeah, so maybe you could...
With length of the driveway, those homes have to have some form of fire suppression, typically as a swimming pool or some other thing that's accessible for the...
Does that count the pond?
Hmm?
Does that count the pond? Does that count the pond?
The pond, the pond. If it's made available, I mean, that's, that's...
That pond access is Lot 10, right?
So, the question...
Did they put one of those, a drive-in or something? Drive-in or something?
Yeah, drive-in, yeah.
It's only that lot of...
According to this, yeah, however, you know, then you're getting into a wetland disturbance once you go into that pond. So, you've got to pay attention to that.
Well, yeah, we do something different.
Or you do something, I'm just saying, or you swim pool or whatever.
It was open where.
Right, well, again, that's, that's fire and this is town, it's a difference.
So, I think the answer to that is, is when you go build that house, they will have to provide the proper fire suppression that's required for that house.
Well, it's got to be on the map. We take that.
Well, we do, we have a note saying that it's required. But I don't see in code exactly what it is that's required for, I mean, you say fire suppression, I don't know in the building code, there's all kinds of, you know, fire walls, fire doors, you know, alarms, there's all kinds of fire suppression equipment. What's exactly required to meet that criteria? I don't know what it is. If the board tells us exactly what it is, we'll put it on the map.
You multiple things do, right?
Oh, yeah.
Could be options.
Well, I would say it wouldn't be up for the board to tell, plenty of that. I would say that something that your consultant should research.
But it is a note on the map. You don't specify it at this point unless there has to be some construction associated with it. If they're going to propose that suppression to be pond access, then they would have to show that as part of the improvement of the subdivision. If it's simply on it as a note, then the building inspector would enforce it by virtue of, you know, what they include in the house. Jim, can you quote the regulation that's required? I can search it out. I put a finding...
Storage capacity.
Maybe you can email me something or let me know what that is. You ran through it on the map.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Burnout says, "Fire suppression equipment as required will be provided for Lot 10, Lot number 6." It's on the front of that. Does he also require pull-ups every so often? Yeah, we have that. And the turnarounds required, dimensional turnarounds. That little fat there for each. They, but Mr. Millsburg took issue with the way you configured the ones for Lot 10. Right, and we'll fix that. I think that's legitimately...
Yeah, it's a legitimate statement. And so, what about, have you provided us with the copies of any of the permits that you obtained or you're in the process?
We don't have permits yet. We haven't filed the Army Corps one yet. That's just a notice that you have to file 45 days before disturbance. So, we will file that now to see if they come back. But generally, they won't. They won't respond to that, but we will file that and I'll copy the planning board. I didn't really want to do that, though we have preliminary approval. I'm sure about that. I think Ricky might have done that.
What's his, Jim?
I can check. As I was trying to point out in my memorandum, these items are not for preliminary approvals. The preliminary approval is basically establishes the lot arrangements of the subdivision and the general type of improvements. The state, for example, will not go in and look at permitting any of the sanitary systems until this board acts on preliminary plat. That's why my suggestion is simply take this to the preliminary public hearing, because there may be changes that come out of that that would affect...
How, except... I respect your opinion, Jim. I would say that if the applicant is having us review, if the engineer for the peer review is giving us bullets to review, I think it's a good idea that we discuss it.
Yeah, engineer even said, called a site plan. This is a subdivision lot. It's a different section of the ocean, too.
Okay, so let's go, let's continue on down the list here. We're at the correspondent to the DEC, which we've just discussed. Driveway access to Lot 3 connects...
No, we didn't, we didn't, we talked about permits, Paul.
What did you, what did you just say?
We were one up. We talked about permits from Army Corps, so it's the next one.
Right, we're talking about permits and it's looking that whole sentence there. And I asked him specifically, have you contacted the agencies?
Well, I only answered half of it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, the Army Corps, our wetlands sponsors may have sent from the map, I don't know. But generally, we wouldn't do that until we had an approval from the town and then we send it to them. And really, because we're under, under the amount of disturbance, under 10,000 square feet of disturbance, it's just a notification you send them. And if they have any concern, they'll let you know. You have 45 days for them to respond.
Okay.
The DEC, on the other hand, we do need a permit. We have filed an application to get a review. You remember, we had the DEC come out and inspect the wetlands and they did confirm our delineation. In fact, they, they said that delineation was a little less than what the Army Corps, you know, criteria is for delineation. And then we comments on our proceeding, they asked for some additional details, and I have sent them those details. And I haven't heard back. I only sent it to them last month.
Okay.
Does Sterling have the letter from the DEC to the applicant about the 100-foot buffers? Because that is...
It was an email.
It was, it was a letter from the DEC.
Well, I think it was in form of an email.
It was a letter. So, did, does Sterling have that, or do we...
We are, we are honoring, they do not require the 100 feet, because it's not, it's not a regulated state DEC wetlands. They recommend we maintain 100 feet and we have maintained 100 feet.
That's where interpretation, my interpretation is that the letter says that you do have to abide by the 100-foot buffers, even though they're not on the state current map at this point.
That's not what the letter said.
We should just get that letter.
And I think, send it, I think, Carol, send it to Sterling. That's all you have to do. That email itself is my idea.
Again, what we're trying to do is housekeeping here, regardless of where we're at in this process. It's just, it's just, we're just trying to do our housekeeping to make sure that everything is, is where it needs to be, right on our different. Okay. We discussed the DEC, we discussed the Army Corps of Engineers. Driveway access to Lot 3 connects to an existing drive on a track that's by kind of like, there was some conversation, I know you've discussed with us, that the conversation you had with Brian about moving the gate or escapes it, I don't know the exact words, all right, but some, some form of communication. Was it, was there a letter or something from Brian that was given to us? Or do, that's not even Brian, that would not be his actual...
That out there.
Yeah, he would have, I don't know, if it's a town property, correct?
It's a town.
So, that would have to fall under, I would think that that would fall under the town board's guidance, the mail to...
They would definitely... Well, there was a request that was being, to us, by Paul.
And what was that?
Not to, not to utilize power right-of-way to that driveway entrance and to have them pissed. So, our concession was fine, share the driveway through a certain way, and then we'll break it up. That's when Barry, Brian, and Brian Drum from the DEC met to discuss how that crossing would be wired. Because there's a pipe there, and we would have to extend the pipe.
Which then would create...
And well, we thought it would be a disturbance on wetlands, but Brian Drum from the DEC came out and was identified as not being part of the state lands. So, so that basically allowed us...
You know, I would think the town board has to be bringing, brought in here somewhere.
I would think that would transfer or change of easement, absolutely.
So, what we, what we're going to require is some type of communication, documentation from the town board that authorizes this act to take place, right?
Or not.
Or not, whatever you're going to do, you know.
It was really just, we're willing to do whatever we need to and make it easy.
We understand that. It would just be to... We understand that, we just need to, need some type of memo memorializing what we're doing.
Final approval?
Yeah. But again, it's all part of getting through this process, so whatever we can provide, you know, just keeps the process moving. This detail for the concrete truck washout, I'm sure Barry is familiar with it, I mean, I've been finding it, seeing it on every site plan anymore. It's coming up every day.
Yep.
Yeah, it's thrown on here, and I mean, I don't know how you're gonna do it, ten lots or you gotta do a two slot or whatever.
No, no, we put it in the subdivision plan, in the switch.
Oh, okay, all right, so you're familiar with it. That's all you got to enter.
I thought it was in there, so it's...
Okay. All right. We talked about the hundred-foot T-shaped driveway turnout to lot ten, if you're going to the driveway, that's a good point. Let's, show us what you can do to recreate that, make it, or we don't have car parking in that. I know this is again part of the final plan, what the proposed driveway maintenance agreement.
We have a redacted draft, Moriallo.
Okay.
So that's what, how would that seem to you?
Uh, I don't know, we need, well, I mean, first of all, well, yeah, draft would have to go to the attorney, would be the idea.
Or whatever you're ready.
Whatever you're ready, yeah. I mean, again, you know, if you, the sooner you get us this material...
He said it to me yesterday, no, I don't know.
All right, yeah. Excuse me?
Probably sure to do it if he said it to me yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
I imagine it.
Well, yeah, we need to review it to make our comments, the attorney can make his comments on it, to protect everybody involved. And again, all of this stuff, the sooner we get it, you know, we can keep the process...
It's generic to a degree, because it's not, it's got four sites, it's a redacted version.
Okay.
It's a sample.
All right, well, I've seen Dave's comment on it, and then the attorneys can work it out, and then, once they get done hammering each other, then they can bring it to us. Okay, so I've, I've taken up too much of the conversation here, I'm gonna start with, Ray, do you have any comments? Joe?
Joe, thank you.
Pete? John?
I'm just still wondering about the fire suppression, maybe you can try to do the drive... I just, I looked it up while we were...
Oh, you did?
It does say in the code that it's, and recommended by the fire chief of the fire district within which the property is located, so it takes this board off the hook as to...
What do you mean?
Whatever, so they handle that to the fire chief and see what the recommendations...
And again, just get it in writing, of course, it's over there, so... Excuse me? Oh, it is? Really?
Is it?
Well, whatever.
So we, we sent this to him and he said, whatever, Gardner comes up, it's okay.
No matter to me, as long as they got, as long as they got something to file, guys, I just need something to back up, I need something to, to document that we followed the, the letter of the law.
I would, my preference would be to have the fire chief appoint as to fire protection as board, so...
Just show them the letter here, though, it states that, you know, we're looking for something more than a letter, a generic statement that says, I don't see any problems here. You know, we want to recognize that, you know, that there's a statement in here that says, prove to us that you're gonna, how you're gonna protect this house in case it's on fire. Something to that, in fact. We're gonna draw from the pond, just give us a explanation of what, how we've got a protection.
You can, you can make a suggestion, go to the fire chief and say, here's our suggestion.
Yeah.
Whoever the final partner, whoever who builds there, because if they don't build, they don't need it, right? Depends on the size of the house, I don't know, a lot of things. But anyway, you want to go to Brian or Peter, I gotta go to those guys.
Well, I mean, if, if, I would go to Brian and tell Brian that Sean had said that Brian should, has the right-of-way, but I don't wanna step, I look, you know what, they, they need to work it out themselves, it's not for us to work on. You know what I'm saying? That's the way I look at it. It's not, it's not their jurisdiction, it's Sean's, right? Our contact info.
You're more likely to get a response from Brian.
How do we think so?
A couple of questions.
Carol? I'm now...
No, no, you're not, I'm worried.
I'm worried, I'm sorry, I forget about Ward, oh...
You're already terrible. I'm always wearing an orange t-shirt too, so I get noticed over here. So we have one reasonably big issue we haven't talked about, conservation easement. Is this the top, you know, when did we talk about the conservation easement?
It's the gorilla in the roof.
I mean, it's not in the context of this memo, but it's an important point here.
Which is, you have the draft, correct? Revised, revised, draft.
Right, Dave hasn't seen that draft. Right, so that's Dave...
No, I, I thought you were supposed to... I think we've got the draft from Dave, but I don't think we've discussed it as a board.
Yeah, I think that's actually my, was my person involved.
Yeah, it was.
Early on. That was an earlier person.
So that's something that should be probably, you know, again, Mark's not familiar with that and it's not something we would get involved in, we should comment on it for sure, but, I mean, just put it in our memo to make sure that we don't miss it. Dave, not to put you on the spot, but I mean, it really is something that I guess we gotta give us some feedback on, so that we have the December meeting, I guess, and then they're gonna...
Yeah, I think that my recollection was the original question, you talked about who's gonna be the holder.
Hold of the stacks, exactly.
And we crossed that with my, my recommendation. Well, I gave you my recommendation, I wasn't necessarily to know what was done with my recommendation.
I think you presented a lot of options, Dave, as I remember that memo.
Right, but after that, there's another version of that.
Oh, there, really?
Oh, yeah, there's still...
Well, let me, let me get the last term of what's in there.
Jim's raising his hand. There's an August second memorandum, which is from David, that says that in accordance with the request forwarded me from the, forwarded to him from me, I review the correspondence dated June thirteenth with consistency with the comments I have provided, memorandum dated March nineteenth. I have attached a copy of my March nineteenth memorandum to this for ease of reference. I believe proposed conservation easement provided by Attorney Moriallo and attached to his June thirteenth letter is consistent with the comments I provided in my March nineteenth memo. Okay. Then there's a, there's a, there's a, so there, that's been done and there is a thing responding, Dave, which leaves to you to have the discussion.
Okay, well, maybe we should recirculate that since there's so many, so many discussions about this.
Can you give me the date of that?
The date of this is August second.
And that, that is a boom to, from David to you. So Dave, maybe you could get us back on track with that?
Sure.
If I may, Jim, what's the date of the, of conservation easement?
June thirteenth.
Thank you. I remember seeing it, but, you know, we never talked about it.
Well, you actually just referred it to the attorney, this is his response, August.
His was, but he can now discuss his.
Very short.
It's a short?
His response, Paul's response?
You remember? Yeah, it's not him, it's the attorney, it's his response.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Yeah, I think that I did, it was, um...
So this is up to the planning board, in accordance with the request forwarded to you from Jim Fryban, I review the correspondence from Riseley and Moriallo dated June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, for its consistency with the comments I have provided by memorandum dated March nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I attach a copy of my March nineteen, twenty seventeen memorandum to this memo for ease of reference. I believe that the proposed conservation easement provided by Attorney Moriallo and attached in his June thirteenth, twenty seventeen letters, consistent with the comments I provided in my March nineteen, twenty seventeen memo. However, I would note the following, on page two of my memo, under two owns reserved open space lands, I noted that. However, zoning law two twenty dash twenty-one subdivision D elaborates on the ownership and states that the ownership entity and structure shall be selected based upon the conservation analysis and management objectives established by the planning board for the protected open space. This determination must be rational and based on the record. In the proposed conservation easement, Mr. Moriallo has set it up with Chaffron LLC being the grantor of the easement and the owner of the lands. Thereafter, as the various lots are deeded out, portions of the conservation easement area will be owned by individual property owners. In my prior memo, I did note that the ownership of the land was a matter for the planning board to determine. I recollection that the arrangement of the lots and subdivisions, one that would make for separate ownership by an outside entity potentially difficult, and as a result, I would recommend against such a decision. I would like to review the final document prior to execution, in particular paragraph eighteen, which is caption liability, semicolon indemnification, is largely duplicative language also found in paragraphs nine and ten. For that reason, I would edit and remove portions of paragraph eighteen. In particular, in paragraph eighteen C, the proposed agreement, the town agrees to identify the grantor, it's actually mutual or cross indemnifications. I see no reason to have the town agree to identify the grantor. Similarly, in paragraph eighteen D, I see no reason to have the town agree to obtain liability insurance and name the grantor as an additional insurer. Certainly, the town could review that with its insurance broker, make a determination, but I would expect that the town has ample insurance that would cover this matter. On my level, should you wish to discuss this matter, any additional questions?
So have you made any further headway or anything?
No.
Basically in our court?
Yeah, basically, Mike's...
Well, we can say whatever we want, and I have your turn, I'm good.
We're gonna win, we're gonna win, it's fine, right now.
You know, obviously, there's gonna be discussion and opinions on the conservation easement starts.
Right, why don't you, why don't you remind us again what your opinions were about the holder?
Well, I think the, after the first draft, it became apparent that Dave felt as though it was best if the town held it best, and we were okay with that to begin with. I mean, we originally thought it would be, we want the owners, the property owners will continue to own the property, they just won't hold the easement. We want a town just gonna hold the easement. That's a power, power of access.
I thought the town was just monitoring the easement.
No, I think my recollection is, there was some discussion about whether the land would be essentially carved off in a large parcel that would be in separate ownership. And the, certainly, the distinct recollection I have is that the applicant did not want to have, like, a lot, a lot of eleven or a huge swath, and that they would rather keep that land with the individual lots and convey it in feeble the lots or subdivision sold. And, but that the easement would cross over all of the, all the different parcels or parts of them. And so what I, I think my memo was suggesting is that it was not something that would be in separate ownership, whether the town would, would be the grantee of the easements, so the town would monitor and invest in the hands of the town, who then would not own the property. So the property owners would own and have use of it, and have the, the, have the ability to enforce it and be the holder.
Are you saying that this eleventh parcel or the ten parcel for the divisions?
I would say it was, my recollection is, it was not set up to easily, the way that the land was laid out, it was not easy to say, okay, here's a, you know, a large contiguous block of land that should be, you know, a separate lot, it's separately viewed, and that was not the way to go with this one, was my recollection.
What I, I may, you know, this time have forgotten, but what, what led to your idea that the town was the appropriate enforcer, holder of the easement and enforcer of it? I believe there was early discussion about the insufficiency of the town's ability to do that, and I don't think you've addressed that.
I, I think the issue about insufficiency, Ray, was about the monitoring.
Yes.
And I think the understanding was, the town would own the easement, but the town would get someone, either its own building inspector or some outside organization to monitor the easement.
So, so Ray, I specifically asked, of course, he's not here anymore, the old zoning code enforcement officer, and he said, not a problem.
He said, for monitoring?
Tomorrow, he said, it's really not a problem. So I'm assuming, I don't know the new guy, but I'm assuming it's the same thing, but he said it wasn't a big deal.
But the, the question is, what, the fact that he thinks he's entirely capable of doing it is the sort of thing a person would say.
Well...
And I'm wondering whether, I mean, we're not in a position, I think, to dictate how this should come out, but at least as we discuss it, it seems worth mentioning that we have the option to recommend that a professional organization whose entire point is to monitor and enforce these kinds of things, that they are insured, that they have an entire professional mechanism that they have demonstrated throughout the county, whereas the town enforcement officer or whatever, I mean, has absolutely no job definition, no demonstrated confidence to do this, and isn't, you know, I mean, it just seems to me, the choice that we should be recommending is that something more or less like the Wallfield Valley Land Trust would be the obvious person to do this job, rather than an already overburdened and extremely inexperienced, um, a town officer.
I, I have an alternate suggestion. If the town has the easement, I think we should buck the decision on monitoring back to the town, because it's their easement, they ought to figure out how to monitor.
Well, I'm sure that's how it will work out, but I do think that we're in a position to make a strong recommendation for professional monitoring by a professional organization, not by someone who will have ten thousand other things and distractions to do, especially during the first year of, of his office.
On page, section seven B of the proposed conservation easement, that's exactly what the conservation easement says.
Thank you.
It's up to the town to decide how to do it.
Well, no, no, I mean, I'm, I'm not disputing that.
It's, it's in the conservation easement, so it's a question of what, to the town board, what's the actually monitor?
Well...
But it doesn't, but this doesn't mean we can't recommend, I think...
I think there should be, when this is all finished, right? Because I'm, it would be my view anyway, that we, we should resolve, we should have a resolution recommending to the town that they should not fall back on a, a second rate form of enforcement. I mean, I don't think we need to say it that way, but that's what motivates me.
So, so to jump in there and keep this whispered to me, it was the same thing I was gonna ask, which, which I have a problem with, and I'll tell you this for one, is that I don't feel that it's the town's responsibility to monitor this based on the fact that it's taxpayers' money that is going to be monitoring an easement, that the taxpayers, only, the only taxpayers that benefit from it are the ten lots.
So Dave, what do you think about legal pressure?
So let me finish, so what I'm saying is that, you know, as this town continues to grow in whatever way it's growing here, you're putting more and more work on, workload on our town employees. We're struggling now with, you know, three days or four days a week of a, of a part-time building inspector, you know, so you gotta look at the facts there. I mean, that, I think that's the first issue that we need to solve, not for the, you know, that's what I believe.
All right, so I think, since the town is the one that came up with the whole conservation easement idea, that it's the town's responsibility to take care of this stuff. And if a part-time building inspector isn't enough, then that's, fight the bullet and make him a full-time building inspector.
At your...
And a code enforcer, because there's two officers and one in the first place.
You're entitled to your opinion, John, that's good.
Yeah, but I was told, and, and I don't know how to, but I was told, it's not a big deal. So he goes out the first time, we see what's going on.
John, you're talking about retired as a building inspector, that is, that's a, you know, you're talking probably to somebody that's retired.
I'm talking about the town allowing an outside entity to become part of the hierarchy of the town, so that's my problem.
Well, I looked at the agenda about setting the public hearing, and I anticipate this document is deep into this issue, so why don't I review everything I've read, and review the conservation easement, because I'm, I'm concerned that some of these questions may be answered in the document, you know, that it's, the town's gonna hold it, but they're gonna have somebody else do it. I think it's actually set up, as I recall, it's only, it's only open for someone to come in, I think it's once a year, to go through and be inspected, so it's not, you know, on that level, you've got at best twenty-four hours worth of time, you know, so let me go through everything. And we have more indicated...
That's all they do on the other, they come in once, or Philly Bridge Farm, which I'm involved in, they come in every two years and do it. It's not every year, and they come in every... It's not every year, and they come in every two years, they look around, boom, they're gone. And I've been there when they do it. And trust me, all they're doing is moseying around, looking, and walking in. It's not much different.
Dave, yeah, about this and then other comments, but could you also review, my understanding was that the easement that is supposed to be on the ten parcels, all of it is contiguous. So it could be made into one parcel. We had a lot of discussion about not only the monitoring of the ten parcels, but how a homeowner is going to treat a, an easement on their property versus an easement sort of held on common, an easement held by one property owner that, that is, you know. So my understanding is that this is all contiguous, and I think as a board, we have discussed the fact that it would be better, especially given the significance of the parcel, it would be better for it to be held as one giant parcel.
Okay, thank you, Carol. You said you had another comment?
Yeah, I do, I have comments, you know, since you were going.
Go ahead, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And about the split, I think it's, it's a little early to decide that no split needs to be done. There's still a lot of things that are in flux, such as, you don't, have you verified that the turnarounds for the fire department are acceptable to the fire department? That would be one thing. The other thing is, is the recommendation of changing the driveway for lot ten. So all these things may change your, your footprint of disturbed soil, disturbance, area of disturbances, and get you back to the five acres, which would trigger the need for a split. So I think that is a little early to determine if you don't need a split.
Can I make a comment on that? The driveway we designed with the turnouts, all the turnarounds meet the specifications that are established by the state. And we showed that to Brian. He had, you know, your fire official, whoever's title is, and he was, it was acceptable to him.
So, Carol, I think you can put out, respond to your comment. They've already drawn all the turnouts along the driveway pursuant to, to the requirements, the code line. The one, the other, the point that, the point that Mark is making here, bullet number, or wherever it is here, is a hundred-foot T-shaped driveway turnout for lot ten appears to include the driveway. So what they, what they're saying is, to your point, they're gonna have to readjust that, which may increase the disturbance. To what level, that's up to the engineer to determine.
Yeah. Just in general, on Mr. Frybend's memo, I just, for the record, I take issue to, in paragraph number one, says the board examined the Gordon Bogdan environmental as well as the then-expensed public participation record. I think what happened was the board adopted the applicant's attorney's determination that the Bogdan report was beyond its scope, and therefore it did not really need to be considered. And I'd also like to point out that, for the record, that the board also did not consider the comments of the ECC. So, just for the record, in, in response to Mr. Frybend's memo.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Dave?
No, I'm sorry.
Carol? Okay, do you have a comment, John? Sorry, just.
I wanted to just remind the board that the conservation easement doesn't benefit these homeowners. This is a benefit to the town. It's directed in the open space plan. The purpose of open space is to serve the whole community. So to say that it's just for their benefit is not.
Wait, so, so let me understand that, Jim. How, if I'm a, if I'm a town resident, how do I, explain to me how I can access that land and benefit from it?
That's not the benefit. The benefit is the preservation of open space for the community.
There's a large well there, it filters rains.
Right.
So, you know, ribs less money. All right, all right, that's what I wanted to talk about.
And that's really what this board was trying to incorporate. You did your determination of significance.
I see.
That's the protection. That is an important part of the.
Now, I clearly understand it. Okay, that's good, that's my, that's my, we're laypeople here.
That's definitely an accurate recap of what you said.
Thank you, thank you for that.
And I, I think, since we reopened that.
We didn't reopen, but I'll add you.
There was, was, again, but what Carol, what Carol says about the greater benefit of having a unified conservation parcel seems to me, you know, I don't think we've gone back again. I support that idea, and I, one of the reasons I do is that the original plan that the applicant brought for ten separate, well, which still includes ownership of ten separate parcels, was presented to us by, I think, Mr. Moriello as an excellent form of environmental protection all by itself, which seemed to me entirely reasonable. I didn't, I, at the time, I, I wanted to present a theoretical example of how that wouldn't work. For example, if I owned one of those, and I was a fervent believer in the principle of conservation, but my neighbor liked to sit out with a repeating lethal weapon and fire into the water, and maybe that's not a violation of, of the environment, but I would very, very much hesitate to try to enforce the rules against such a person. So it seems to me the idea that individual owners are gonna be in a position to take on each other when one is a violator is ridiculous. And that's why it's very important to have this as one parcel enforced by a serious organization that has the ability to go in and enforce it. And if there are complaints, one can go to them instead of a beleaguered and inexperienced town officer who has none of the ability and the weapons to do anything about it.
Well, thank you for opening up the comments period again, Ray, on the conservation easement. If nobody else has any other sort of comments, I'd like to close this applicant and move on to the next one.
Wait, you want to set a public hearing?
Excuse me, you want to set a public hearing?
Well, that was on the, only reminder is we've taken along the general's distribution.
Okay, so we'll go back to. All right, so, all right, so let me read the recommendation here, so I didn't, getting off track here, I apologize. It is recommended that the board should set up preliminary plat, public hearing for the December meeting, and forward the revised documentation only to the county planning board to complete the early final. So, with that in mind, can I have a motion for that particular recommendation?
I think it's still people ready for that, if we're still talking about the conservation easement. The public needs to have some more information about that comment on it.
Excuse me?
The public needs to have more information about the conservation easement.
Well, the first of, we're gonna start the public hearing, we're not, we know.
With respect to authority, has the motion to open, to have a public hearing on preliminary plat, which we pushed back so that we could get the Sterling environment.
We had a study for tonight, and we said we really wanted to fund the opportunity so that we could see them to review and review our comments with the planning board before the public hearing.
Okay, so let, let's understand one thing. Do you have all of the documentation that is required to establish the public, to establish the public hearing or the preliminary plat? Are you completely ready for the complete application, in your opinion?
We believe we were before.
But you were waiting for Sterling to review and ask a courtesy?
Yeah, we had no idea what his comments would be, that we know. We're uncomfortable with them.
So, Carol, if you remember correctly, they were, they did, did want to come to the November meeting, this meeting, as a public hearing. And they stated that they would like to push it back a month. Let Sterling review, make comments on this preliminary plat, and then address those comments and move forward. All right?
And they addressed the comments?
And, and you voted yes on that, Carol. So, anyway, the question I would have, though, is.
You still need to set the public hearing. It's, well, you're worried you see that.
Before, before I answer the question that we have, I understand, it's my, it's my understanding that we already did, and many of the things we're discussing here are yes conditions for final final approval.
Okay.
But not necessarily for preliminary or final. Is that correct?
Well, you can look at it however you want. In my opinion, that you should have, this should be as complete as application as possible, whether it's preliminary or final. That way there, we don't have to have so many discussions about it, and then the public accusing the planning board of rushing to judgment or not, or the applicant not having completed application, in my opinion. There could be difference of opinions about this table, that's my opinion.
Can, can I make a motion so we can make a resolution? I move that we schedule the public hearing to review the preliminary plat.
Second.
Okay, we have this, so the ladies.
And also send the revised application.
Send the revised application to the Ulster County.
Yes, and send the revised application to Ulster County.
Did you, you understand the Ulster County planning board referral? We know, you know how to send the application to Ulster County? Okay, please. James, would you, would you make sure that?
We have a motion and a second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. These ladies captured that?
Motion to have a public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
Carol's opposed. Motion carries. All right, okay.
I abstain.
You abstained?
I didn't say anything. I abstained.
Ray abstained. Do you have, the documents that we have currently in our hands here are ready to go to the Ulster County planning board? Do you have anything else?
I have a question before this. If next month, we're gonna have a public hearing, we're gonna have comments on this conservation easement issue, is next month's meeting an appropriate time and place when we can have this discussion about, are we okay with the conservation easement as proposed with the ten lots having fee ownership, the town owning the easement, and another party, potentially a, a Walco Valley Land Trust-type organization doing the monitoring? Are we okay, can, can we have that discussion and, and?
Yeah, I think we should have that discussion.
I think you have, well, at least, at least a portion of it, you have to. Because in part, the preliminary plat approval is going to, if you're discussing whether the, the conservation easement is gonna be owned in fee by the individual lots versus the separate lot, you really, you have to have that before preliminary plat is granted. So at least in part, you have to address some of these issues.
That's not done during the hearing, that'd be after the hearing's closed. Public hearing is for public discourse.
So then how is the public going to comment on what we're?
Just as, as you're doing now, and that's, then the board takes up their comments.
I think the question is how are they going to comment on the outcome of our discussion of the conservation easement? If we do that afterwards?
The conservation easement is part of the application that they're making comments on.
Perhaps we should do it before the public hearing.
Well, no, I'll tell you what we need to do is, we need to have those documents, all of the documents, downloaded into a Dropbox. They then get forwarded to the town's website for the public to review.
So we can have another public hearing once we decide on what we think should happen with the conservation easement?
That's the final plat.
Okay, so.
Right now, the proposal is not to have a separate, a, the eleventh lot with the, you know, with the conservation easement as an eleventh lot. It's proposed by the applicant to include it. And so that's, that's the proposal. And there's certainly ample materials in the record going back and forth on the conservation easement, my memos and things like that, that, at least in part, some of them are, I don't know, maybe mine is not available to the public, but certainly these are available on the state compact as to, and opinion point by the other as to the inclusion or exclusion of that land from the individual lots. That might help inform the board of some, some indication of preference and discussing.
Wait, so perhaps it would be a good idea that.
By the way, if you come up with your decision before you hold the public hearing, you're just gonna be criticized for, eh, reach your conclusion.
Now, listen.
I think you're perfecting the timing issue, yes.
So, be careful, be careful which, which order you do think you're gonna look at. My brief experience will lead to criticism.
Why can't we have the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then continue our discussion on the conservation easement?
Or you can, yes, close it for the night.
Yeah, close it for the night.
And then check out it in segue into the discussion. And we'll see where it takes us as to, you know, where you feel things are left alone as to your next steps.
So let me understand what you're trying to say here. It's something new to my ears. We're gonna have a public hearing on the Saturday. We can, did you just say we can close the public hearing at that meeting?
I would, I would suggest that you can, you can end the receipt of public comment for that night, and then you can have your own discussion.
And then reopen the public hearing? Just continue. You're saying, continue to, yeah. Well, you're saying close the public hearing, so that means that. All right, you're saying.
Repeating the line, that's what I'm saying is, you don't necessarily have to go, we're gonna hold a public hearing, you do nothing else but hold a hearing until we're done. You can receive comment, but people have set their piece next, next month. Go, okay, thank you, you know, you'll decide at that point whether you need to leave it open for written comment, whether you need to leave it open until January for additional comment to the board. But after that, earlier that, after you, you know, kind of heard enough for that night, then you'd have a discussion, you know, amongst the board as to the conservation.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that, I, I support that. I mean, it's not something that, that I've ever been involved with in the years I've been on this planning board, so it's just kind of new to me to understand that, how that. We typically hold public hearing for an application. Then we have no discussion about what was, what, what just transcribed at the public hearing, we move to another application. Then we come back the next month, and if we continue the public hearing, we then open up the public hearing again, we talk, we listen to the public. And then if we decide we're gonna close the public hearing, we close the public hearing, we move on to application number three, which is not related to that public hearing. And then the following month, we start deliberating on the public comments. So what you're telling me right now is a little different, which I support. I'm not, I don't, I don't take an issue, but I'm just trying to understand it so that as a chairman, I can drive the.
That is my, my suggestion. We can, we can talk about it offline and see if, if I'm going to feel from what you're, don't use to, or buy a lot of times. And I don't think it's inappropriate to have the public hearing, let the people that are there speak, and then if there's time left over, you know, the board needs to talk about what's been presented back and forth and have some discussion, so.
Works for me. If you, you know what, that's why you're here, you're guiding us legally. Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any other comments? We've taken up plenty of time here with this application. We got a small agenda, and I'd like to keep moving. Do you have any more time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are gonna jump into the agenda here of. Site plan, open space development for Wood 1A, Root Hillway, formerly the Sierra, the Imperial property, fifty-three units, multiple residents. We are, welcome, gentlemen.
A lot easier parking, parking.
Excuse me?
It's a lot easier parking, parking.
Okay, you had to tune that up. Thank you. Your R P recorded. Okay, let me get to the. Seems like you have a lengthy memory. So, Vice Chairman, Mr. Lightfoot, if you're already reading that, now, welcome.
Date November eighteenth from Jim Frybend. Subject, major site plan application, open space development for Wood 1A, DePiro Farm property, round two oh eight RA in Espeiro District. Public hearing closed. Application status, the planning board completed a public hearing on the proposed residential development seeker determination in July. At a special workshop meeting, the board evaluated the F E C A F and completed part two with two items to be referred to an outside consultant, flooring and fauna report and the water supply impacts. These items were then responded to an extensive review and reports by both the applicant for additional well tests and the addendum to the North Country Ecological Services Report, as well as the ECC commentary. Also, at the June meeting, the board received the county planning board referral recommendations. Also at the June meeting, the board received the county planning board referral recommendations. The county report stated 11 required modifications. Those modifications were part of the normal site plan process. At the September meeting, the board received a report by Sterling Environmental, which covered both seeker and site plan issues, with information requested to complete the seeker negative declaration. The board deferred further consideration of a draft neg deck under consideration for a response by the applicant to the Sterling report. As requested by the board, the applicant then provided four documents responding to all of Sterling's comments as follows. A, Green 208 LLC letter to the chairman providing line-by-line responses to the Sterling report. B, an updated FEAF part one resolving several technical, not material corrections to the May 17th document. C, the North Country Ecological Services letter of September 18th responding to Sterling's comments on the EAF form D-2B subsection 3 and 4, as specifically identified by the board for evaluation. The MNTM engineering letter of September 29th, 2017, responded to Sterling comments on the 72-hour well test pattern. At the October meeting, the board requested that the new material be evaluated by Sterling Environmental relative to the Sterling September 12th letter. The board received another response from Sterling dated October 17th with further comments from the September 15th letter responding to the applicant's responses to the October 17th letter. The board has received a further response by Sterling dated November 14th, reiterating objections to Wood, to the Wood 1A documentation relative to the lack of an SWPP plan. Environmental assessment form information and the wetland field data sheets. On matters of the 72-hour pump test, the solid management plan development and the requirement for a final site plan SWIP and wastewater design are required to be certified by a professional engineer. All are relevant to final site plan review. Based on the record to date, the draft negative declaration previously reviewed by the board accurately reflects the board's discussion and the individual decisions on each of the 20 project impact areas. The Sterling letter of November 14th does not address the draft negative declaration. The board's decision on the two agreed additional examination areas is confirmed in the applicant's documentation listed above. Recommendation, based on the facts available to the planning board as lead agency and documented in the part two of the FEAF, the reports of Sterling Environmental and the responses listed in paragraph four above, there are no identified potential large impacts. On that basis, after examination by the board of the reference sections, it is recommended that the board find that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment as presented in the application, and that the board by resolution issue the negative declaration attached. It's further recommended that the board authorize submission of the site plan to the DEC, the Elska County Board of Health, and the DOT for comments on the project design. Further action and revisions to the site plan will be required to complete the site plan review and findings per section 220-66. A second public hearing should be scheduled upon completion of agency and board site plan revisions.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Dave?
Yes.
Did you say that you had some revisions that you wanted to make?
I do, I just didn't know before you knocked into the neg deck if you wanted, if there's any discussion on Sterling's letter, which might precede that discussion on the neg deck.
So does everybody have the Sterling letter of November 14th? Does anybody want to read that? All right, nobody wants to read it, I'll read it. My September 15th and October 17th letters document the review by Sterling Environmental of the bumper of the site plan application. Copies of prior letters are attached for reference. Following my October 17th letter, additional submission was reviewed consisting of a MNTM 72-hour well test dated October 31st. We find the application material sufficiently complete to proceed with the state environmental following review. However, the following require clarification. However, the following will require clarification with the applicant. A SWPP has not been provided. Sterling's October 17th letter identifies several items in the EAF regarding clarification, requiring clarification. These should be discussed with the applicant at the planning board meeting. Three, wetlands. The wetland delineation report, field data sheets submitted to USA Corps of Engineers have not been provided by the applicant, which A D should be forwarded to the town issued by the USA COE. Number four, 72-hour pump test. Letter by MNTM dated October 31st is acceptable, copies attached. The letter acknowledges that additional investigations and pump testing will be conducted to support an application to the UC DOH for water supply permit. The pump test previously performed was a pump rate three times greater than required by UC DOH, which indicates there should not be a significant issue caused by water withdrawal. Soil management plan development. The letter by PVE LLC dated September 27th provides an acceptable response to the prior comments regarding the management of potentially impacted soil. Six, the drawing plans and engineering documents. The site plan drawings, design of the water and wastewater systems, and the SWPP should be submitted in a final form certified by a licensed PE. Respectfully marked post-PE.
So I guess he commented.
Does the applicant want to respond to any of these bullets that have been listed here before we jumped into the document? I think we did respond at the October meeting. There was an October 4th letter from Green LLC, which responded to all of those bullet points. The one that I recall that were under discussion relates to the comprehensive plan, and there is a comprehensive plan. Question was, does discuss the site? My recollection, it did not, and that's why it was checked. The board wishes to check it, yes. It's acknowledging there's a comprehensive plan, but it doesn't discuss the site and the specific recommendations. So it's really... The other question that was raised that someone was the issue of whether this is commercial or residential. You look at the start of that section of the EAF, it talks about residential, commercial, industrial, which clearly means something different. So I think when you look at the character of development, you look at commercial, you look at industrial, they're different in nature and content. Much of the EAF goes to those kind of issues. You talked about air quality permits and things of that nature. You talked about sewer plants. Those are typically found with those kinds of more intensive commercial and industrial uses. This is a residential project, it's... I guess the way to think of it is, it is not exceeding the density of single-family units that would be allowed on the site. It is preserving a lot of open space that would otherwise be consumed by those single-family units, but it's not increasing the impact, the same septic, same water demands for those dwelling units, whether they're in multiple buildings, multiple unit buildings, or if they're in single family. So I don't think there's a distinction in terms of the impact, and that basically is the reason why I think it's a residential development. Ray, do you have any comments on his findings?
No.
Joe?
I was gonna say, I read that letter from MNTM on 172-hour pump test, responding point by point to the technical questions raised. And since I'm a licensed hydrogeologist and licensed in California and the state of New York as a professional geologist, this is kind of something I felt comfortable saying that the technical, I felt, found the technical responses also adequate and understandable and explained strange spike in the data and made specific discussion about how they projected impact on existing wells and basically agree that they had acceptable responses to the technical points and acknowledged that they will have to do additional pump testing for their water supply permit, but that had done a long-term continuous pumping test that showed an adequate water supply.
So how can you address, while we're having you on the spot here, how do you address the concerns of the neighbors where they've had issues with their wells, they over years have gone dry or failing?
Well, a well is a constructed, it's an infrastructure. People often have problems with their wells going dry or failing. The project doesn't exist. So if they're having problems with their wells, like I do in my house, for example, it means I don't have such a great well, and the use of my family can't exceed the capacity of that well at times. And it may have to be, it may be 14 years old, it may need to be deepened, it may not have much storage in the basement, it may not adequately be ready for our mitts for our Thanksgiving weekend, but it doesn't really go to what is the state of the aquifer, the regional water table impact of a new well. And the purpose of a continuous pumping test with monitoring of both the drawdown in the well, the recovery after you shut it off, and monitoring and monitoring wells, is to project that same level of pumping over longer periods of time. And if individual homes or other existing wells have had problems, it could be that they have, they got a lousy well, or marginal well, or like many people in Gardner, just enough well. It doesn't mean...
Enduring drought situations?
Well, enduring drought situations, then the water levels in those wells may be lower, yeah, with or without this project. In other words, this project is not in existence yet. People are, every time this discussion has come up, 1,000, 100,000 times across the United States, there are concerns of existing well owners because of their existing wells. But the purpose of this is to evaluate the impact of a new well in this location at this pumping rate, not to solve other people's existing marginal well problems. But you can't do that.
Okay, well, I didn't want to put you on the spot, Joe, but I thought you were the right person to answer the concerns that we've heard through public comment, and I appreciate your comments.
Well, I have a question.
Excuse me, I'd like to go around the table here. Do you have any questions? All right, so Keith.
So Jim, I've never been in a situation where a consulting engineer says, where's the SWIP plan, and the applicant's not provided one. By not providing a SWIP plan, doesn't that change our perspective on the seeker document? Because...
I think his statement indicates that it's satisfactory. The SWIP plan is something that grows out of the final site plan, which doesn't exist yet.
But how do you make a valuation on impacts on surface waters and wetlands?
Because they've established what the parameters are for this development in terms of the general level of runoff and how they're going to control it.
But they haven't shown some plan.
Yes, and they also haven't shown you the final site plan, which is what has to be done next. Because you can't have a final site plan until the Department of Health and the DOT have come in and told you what the criteria is going to be for where the septic fields are going to go, where the driveways are going to go, their alignments and grades.
But how do we say that there's, this is back to the same reason why I had to get the well tests. How do I say that there's no possible impact if there's nothing on the plan in front of me?
Because you have information showing that based on their suggested construction, there is no probable significant impact on runoff. This is a 100-plus acre site, and they're going to occupy 5%.
So I'm going to chime in along with what Keith talked about, because this is obviously something that I deal with on a daily basis too, with these SWIP issues. Not as far as design, I want to clarify that. But my question is, I struggle with this because I've seen other towns at other planning board meetings require all of that documentation provided prior to seeker determination. And my question is, let me finish, and I'll get to the point, is my question is, why is a neighboring town doing it one way, Gardner does it another way, and the Windsor does it another way? So I just, is it part of our code, is what you're going to tell me, or is it something?
I mean, that's what the board, you have different towns, they all have different approaches in how to process these documents.
I see.
But how are we making our determination? Is it just by what our consultant has recommended? I mean, I don't see us making this decision. If it's up to the town boards or the planning board, we should be making that decision instead of saying, oh, well, the town's do it this way, and Mr. Gardner is saying it's okay, but we're not really working as a planning board enough actively deciding this issue.
Didn't we address this in the workshop about environmental impact on the site? Didn't we specifically address this?
We did.
Well, they said the SWIP plan wasn't needed, then the engineer came back and said...
It doesn't exist, he said.
He always said it's not provided.
It's not provided. But he needs to provide one.
Right, but I'm reaching for our discussion where we specifically in the environmental review process talked about stormwater. Okay, so there's no SWIP. But there's other stuff.
Let's Dave jump in here.
I will agree with Jim that different communities have different views and procedures on how and when they want certain documents. And my analogy for the SWIP would be that that document is, you know, a binder full of hundreds of pages worth of design and calculations in coming up in the final plan. And it would be the equivalent of saying, okay, we want the SWIP, we also want your final design of your wastewater treatment system, the full design, and if you were having a water system, the full design of that, versus can you provide us a baseline showing with respect to, say, wastewater treatment, that you have an empty land area and characterize the soil so that if the system is properly engineered and designed, that it can handle the wastewater. So with respect to stormwater, I view it the same way, is that is there a threshold showing that the amount of disturbance, the amount of land, and the ability of the land to handle or have room for the various treatment systems and facilities required by a full SWIP is available? And I think what Mr. Millsbaugh is, is not here, but what he's suggesting is that in his experience, that at a site this large, with a development of this scale, that the required practices under SWIP are adequate to appropriately maintain stream and handle stormwater. So on that basis, that he's satisfied that there's not going to be a significant adverse impact on the environment as a result of stormwater. So now, other communities may take a different approach, and we want to see the whole thing designed. The problem I personally have with that is the first time you design that whole thing, and the next, the first time this board goes, well, what if you moved the parking lot or the tennis court or whatever here or there, then some engineer's got to go back and redesign and move everything. So it is a little bit of a chicken and the egg into final design versus the concepts in the seeker analysis. So I'm not saying there's a right or a wrong answer, there's different approaches.
Sorry, so, but I wasn't going to ask that. Did we all agree that you're providing a SWIP plan?
It's part of the cycle.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That was a quick against question, I wanted to make sure we had the discussion because we confirm that we all agree that the amount of disturbance during the full SWIP, which I, my recollection, it was. I had that discussion, I think we did have this exact discussion, what I had to say, give your absence, which was, yeah, different.
And I recall getting carried away with the question that they're saying at that meeting also. So, that's okay, but I guess what I wanted, just real quick, is if another project came into us and they were developing whatever the max they could on that site, is it allowable to the planning board to request the SWIP if we feel that this site is going to be tight with the ability to be able to handle discharge?
You're handing me an easy one, I'm never going to disagree with that, is that in a particular, in a particular case, if you get a site that is unique or small, or they're trying to squeeze, you know, 10 pounds in a six-pound bag, you're going to say, we want to see the whole thing before it even starts to work, as compared to, you know, certain situations here, you've got just a significant amount of land area as compared to development area, that, you know, we can safely say that there's plenty of room to accommodate the treatment and other infrastructure required for a full SWIP.
You know, and just a side note... You know, and just a side note to what you just said, going back to this application, although they might be claiming, they are claiming, they are protecting whatever acreage you're, what is it, 50% or 60% of the site you're protecting?
Ninety.
Ninety percent of the site. However, you know, one thing that, you know, a layperson that doesn't know that site, which may not understand that, well, there's a significant amount of wetlands on that site. So when you throw in that, when you deduct that, then, you know, how much are they actually being, is usable for stormwater management? So there's that, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, there's a lot of issues. But I don't want to belabor his point, I did it last month and I apologize, but, so we're past me, John?
No.
Warren?
No comments?
Carol?
I'm just, I know the public is concerned about the water table and the aquifer, and I just don't think that we've heard any discussion or any expert give us information about what happens when Ohio Bill goes in. Right now, anyone who does a pump test can be successful by the fact that, as Joe said, there's nothing there. We start looking at the cumulative impacts of all these adjacent, and I believe it is adjacent, is not, what's the distance between two?
Couple of months.
Couple of miles to Ohio Bill?
Well, by virtue of maybe a mile.
Yeah, but...
The question becomes, you know, what water aquifer can support, given that we're permitting a lot, we're increasing the population by, you know, good, what, 15% perhaps, just on those two developments?
You know, Carol, I, I can't respond. I understand, I understand, you have a lot of query about hypothetical or what if, you have a lot of what ifs, and that is, I mean, in all due respect, I'm just saying, I mean, we, you know, it's like, we, you know, as part of the process here of planning and engineering is taking into consideration the particular site. It's not up to them to go beyond the site. The zoning is adopted based on, you know, what the area can handle, what the structure that's in place can handle, and it's not up to us to be able to make those changes and/or look at those.
I think that somehow we, as a board, that is something that we should be doing. And in fact, you know, in federal law, there is a whole area that when you look at agency action for permits, you look at cumulative impacts. So this is not something I'm coming up with out of the blue. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to put up hurdles, I'm saying this is something very valid that we need to start looking at as a board, and that if we are talking about a comprehensive plan, it may be that this is where we need to have one, because otherwise we are just piecemeal permitting, and it's happening all at once. When all of these developments are built, things can radically change. That's...
Okay, I hear you. I don't have any response. Does anybody else want to respond?
I would be interested to hear what Joe Hayes has to say.
Nothing, thank you.
And I know there has been an act for study that was done in, I think, 2000, perhaps, and by, I'm trying to think of the, but that might be something, we should be looking at that.
Okay. Dave, so you're going to guide us now?
Sure, so we did have a draft negative declaration that the board went through and was distributed previously, and what I want to pass around are the final version of the document. Well, that was Jim's email, and I did go through it. I have a redline copy that you can see. I picked up there were a few capitalization or other type of, redlined every single little thing like that, but I did redline the substantive changes, which is this document.
Sorry, you still redlining?
This is a redline.
Jim's, did you redline to Jim's?
This is what Jim sent around, okay, I redlined it.
It's his redline, actually, it's all his.
Well, it's not all mine, you made some changes to the document, too.
I just fill in here.
So just pass those around, once they get around, we'll talk about it.
The one that is the email is not here?
That's not the final version, no. It's very, it's very...
There's an extra one here, Jim. I just...
No, there's a dozen, there's five.
One would be perfect.
There's not much, it's, the redline has lined on the left-hand margin, show what you changed, okay? The other document is just a clean copy of that.
Yeah, this is a clean copy.
This is a clean copy?
This is a clean copy.
The one with the cover page on it's clean, and then the redline. So it's the document you've always seen through the working program. So I'll just start at the top, and you can follow, I'll go quickly and be stopping. I said I did redline, so it's six NYCR, and there's no six in front, I added six in the first line. We also want to make sure that we're saying we will not have a significant adverse, I added the word adverse impact, that is the standard for negative declaration, that word wasn't there, so that was important. So I'm on, I'm on this one that doesn't have the cover sheet, that has a redline.
Excuse me, you're saying redline, do you guys have one that has an actual redline?
No, it doesn't have, it's got a line. I'm sorry, that's what I called redline, I didn't print it in color, but it's got the, it's got the underline or striked.
We got it, it's okay.
I'm in the middle of the page with description of the action. The applicant had commented, this is the thing I want to draw attention to, "We originally called it clustered condominium development." Comment was made by the applicant that, you know, there should be some reference to rental. I think that it is, it is sometimes condominiums, it may be viewed as something that is sold to a purchaser versus an apartment or rental unit, so we wanted to make clear and make sure there's no concern that that in the project contemplates rental units versus condominiums would be considered as real estate, that someone owns a condo versus, although you can rent it from someone else. Down at the bottom of page one, we had, it said, it used to say only 14.5 acres of the 113 are proposed to be disturbed, it's 10.2 acres, which pointed out is the correct number. So that is a decrease. The next substantive change is on page two, number three, you can take a moment to read that. There was a change that the roads are now infervial surfaces versus pervious, was pointed out by the applicant, and so those numbers of pervious substance, surfaces, excuse me, change in corresponding percentages changed. Then I added the language, "The project will realize standard septic erosion control measures to limit impacts to runoff in addition to the SWIP." The next change is on page five. At the top of page five, we're at number 12, critical environmental areas. I just tweaked that language to say there's no critical environmental areas in or near the project site, and also to confirm that there are no CBAs anywhere in the town of Gardner, so I just, based on the state website, I just wanted to add that language. Fifteen, we just put the word approximately 300 persons, obviously, 300, it may vary a little bit above or below as to open the population. We had a sentence at the end, "Notably, the town's population has been dropped in over the past 10 years, and initial housing will help stem that loss," I just added the word options, I think what we were trying to say is that different types of housing options will help possibly stem that loss. And those were the changes as to the document we're working from. So the other version that went around was just a clean copy of that, the whole change was accepted along with the part three of the EAS cover sheet attached to it. And so where we were is, we had delayed a vote on the negative declaration, principally on my concern that Sterling had raised a question about the, some information in the pump test, and I wanted something written from Sterling that the, that their inquiry had been satisfied, we did receive, one of Sterling's letters did clarify that they were satisfied that the information was sufficient on which to base a negative declaration. And so in my view, if the board is ready, you can entertain a motion on the negative declaration. And then I brought one-sided signature copies for the chairman to quote to about it.
Okay, do I have any comments from the board? Ray?
No.
Joe?
Question on my process, after the SECA is closed, is that when we can move to preliminary plat approval? Or, there is no plat approval, this is not a subdivision.
It's a site plan.
It's a site plan, so basically I'm getting to, will we have an opportunity to address any additional engineering review questions specifically like the septic system design?
Yes, entirely. After this, then they can go to the board else and you can see, get all these things dotted and, of course, as required.
Thank you. Dave, Keith, John?
Not this time.
Warren?
No, thank you.
Carol?
No, I guess, going back to what I said, I would be happier if we did review, remembering, studies done by Russell or Lee out of Chasen. So when it comes to impacts on groundwater, I'd be happier if we reviewed that. Although, the good news is, I do think, I remember what it said about that area, and that actually may have a recharge in it. But it would make me happier if we reviewed that.
You do have a...
I have it on my computer at home.
At home?
Yeah.
It's never been reviewed, discussed, and approved by the town board. It's still in draft form.
I couldn't be more than that. But I just feel like, you know...
Is that something that the, is that what the ECC had presented?
Yes.
Right, okay, yeah.
They presented it under the assumption, no, but they presented it under the assumption that it had been approved, and it has not, never.
Right, right. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, it's not adopted, Carol, so it's not relevant.
Well, I mean, well, put it this way...
Well, it's relevant.
It is relevant, but it's not...
Yeah, I would be happier if we, as a board, you know, reviewed that, but that's really my only comment.
Right, so with no further comments, can we...
Motion to adopt the negative declaration?
For?
For Green 208 LLC.
What, the one they have, or they?
Yeah.
We did this, is it Green 208 LLC?
LLC, yeah.
There you go.
So that's, let's fill those projects. On the project line, the parts per corner.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the negative deck on the major site plan for Green 208 LLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
I would suggest that you identify this document, that it's the document presented to you tonight.
It's today's date.
As of today's date.
All right, so it's on top, okay, so it's David Tarry, so that's a good point, November 21st document, 2017, project Green 208 LLC, has prepared by our attorney, David Brennan.
Yes, I agree with that.
Do we have a second, by Keith, for the favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, thank you. Okay. So are you aware of the procedure moving forward for your next meeting? What's going to take you to the next meeting?
One of the things that was done early in this process was I had identified issues with the site plans in terms of the site design, as well as issues to be addressed by the, with the fire company, wants revisions of the access, and I'm just going to recommend the board authorize me to, once again, review those with the applicants so that they can incorporate those changes before he starts with the DOT.
Okay.
There are things, designing things.
Do you have the memo that refers to what he's speaking to, Kelly?
Yes.
You have what you're saying on this?
Yes, and we can work with you on...
Okay.
You're doing sorry.
You know that we're talking about the end of the month for some middle for new material?
We'll submit it to you before we split to the other agencies.
No, the next thing is they have to get, go through the agencies, they need to first inform their document and information on the design, and then get the doc, the responses from the agency, and then return to you with whatever...
All right, so let me go back onto the memo, and then I can, I'll just go by your recommendations. It's recommended based on the facts available to the planning board, lead agency, and documented in part two of the FBAF.
All right.
All right, it's further recommended, all right, thank you. It's further recommended that the board authorize submission of the site plan to the DEC, UCBOH, and the DOT for comments on the project design. Further action or revision to the site plan will be required to complete the site plan review and finding for 2066. The second public hearing for public's knowledge, second public hearing should be scheduled upon completion of the agency and the board's site plan revision. So we're going to be going through this for the next couple of months, all right?
We're going to be going through it.
I understand you're going to be going through, right, I was just saying. So you will not be here at the December meeting, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, you will not be here.
Yes, you're not going to be here, yes. Yes, we understand, we will not.
Before you guys leave the table, just so I don't spring it on you later, I'm just going to, we had substantial public comment about the septic systems, concerns about shallow bedrock out there, and in your septic system design, you proposed raised beds with concentrated group septic systems. I wanted to ask you to ask your engineer, and as you work with the county, to consider an improvement to that septic system design that might include an additional aeration chamber between the septic tank and the leach field. It's been proposed in another commercial project here in Gardner, it's a common, anyway, it's a well-established technology in areas with septic problems, and in a large site like this, it could improve the quality of the septic effluent that those raised beds get.
What's the other project?
Harwood Spa.
Very men's spa, we see that.
But the, there's a third-party provider of that aeration tank, you know, it's commercial adult septic system, just a couple of brains.
Just to clarify, we're going through this process with DEC, and the county proposes Speedy's.
Oh, right. Well, it has to go through both, though, right?
So I think the county has given jurisdiction to DEC, or acknowledged to DEC.
Well, the Speedy's is just for the discharge, right?
Speedy's permits your private discharge, but they might understand that. Just because if there is something that needs to bring your attention to.
Right, well, you hear what we're asking, and do your best, and we don't like what you bring to us, we'll send you back. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good Thanksgiving, and we're just going to keep the meeting moving, so if you have any chairs that you've relocated, we do know that you carry, I don't have to do it the other way. Okay, so we are on information, we have conducted all of our new business for the recent new business, we've been on all of it.
Is that information that's here?
Okay, we have a two-lot subdivision request for Mr. Jim Bianco at the Huguenot, is it called the Huguenot Creamery, is that right?
Bone.
What is it? What is it?
Stonehouse.
Yeah, somehow, you know...
Hughland Sun.
Yeah, Hughland's a new pool. All right, so, how welcome, Jim, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, my name is James Deakon, the owner of Twenty-Eight O'Nine Round Forty-Four Fifty-Five, who's...
Oh, good.
Stonehouse Creamery, here before you this evening for informational purposes for a minor two-lot subdivision, and maybe sketch...
Just one down.
Of my proposed lot lot.
You need one, Jim?
Please.
You have any questions?
I can answer. Questions? Okay, so, I think, Jim, what we're going to do is just let Mr. Frybin pull out the code, I know he was mentioning that there's, you know, when you do this, you have to meet, that both lots have to meet the minimally required requirements. I think there was an issue with that, Jim stated, so.
And...
It is two acres only, we're aware of that. This is probably something for the code.
Is that the code for the Hamlet district?
Yeah, well, it indicates C-CHM.
That's what this is in, right, H-M?
Correct.
So, I just wanted to review that with the table. So he's looking into the minimum...
So H-M...
So what is he looking into, minimum what?
Lot size.
This is the Hamlet zone, Hamlet zone?
Correct.
Hamlet mixed.
Hamlet mixed.
And the density requirement based on available utilities is 2,000 square feet. Essentially, the only thing I can see from, you know, the preliminary review is that the property line, the new property line needs to be reestablished so it's perpendicular to the road line. There's also a buffer requirement because that's a commercial use. Essentially, you have to establish the Creamery lot so that it meets all the current requirements as if it were built on a conforming lot.
What's the road exits, I mean, how much do you have on the road?
For this use, no, these are minimal because it's Hamlet.
How do you mean, today's, oh, it's a non-conforming use?
It's a conforming use. It's the, there's certain structures on it that are non-conforming, but the board can't approve a subdivision that creates any new non-conformity.
That's the principle.
You know, setting up the septic system or...
Things like that.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see.
The driveway, things like that. And those standards are all in the zoning for the commercial use.
Can you give me the...
Well, it's in 2010, or 2019-11, and you'll see the notes for each in this room.
So you're saying the lot line and Hudson, they have them here?
It has to be perpendicular to the road line. This, this one's coming in at an angle, it needs to be straightened out. There's also a minimum, minimum distance between, excuse me, the driveway and the property line.
What's the minimum distance between?
I really didn't dig into it, it's a good information, I'm just telling you what section is the code.
What was your question, Jim?
What was the minimum distance from the property line to the...
County and state road is 50 feet.
It's county road, right?
Yeah, county seven. Front yard setback on a county is...
But these are, that doesn't apply here because, as I said, this is a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
What we're looking at, the only we're looking at is this new property line. That's 37, so it meets all the criteria.
So, the side yard, and the side yard then is basically what you're saying?
So it has to move to the, what's the direction?
Has to go 30, so your side yard setback...
Has to move to the north, is that what you're saying? They could just move to the east, it doesn't have to...
To the east. It needs to be perpendicular to that road line.
Is there a setback from the septic system? Excuse me. I thought there might be another one there where there's a setback from your septic system that you might...
Is it...
So you say perpendicular?
There is something from the septic.
Pull out the bottom?
Yep. Jim, why don't you do this, why don't you sketch it, how you think it needs to be?
I don't know what the dimensions are, I hate to do that.
Well, we just did the generic sketch, that's all, you're not asking, we're not asking you to scale, we just show us what you're trying, what you're trying to explain.
He was just...
Shouldn't be this hard.
He looked at his drawing.
No, I couldn't do it.
It looks something like that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that was a subdivision.
But again, I can't tell you, I have not reviewed it in detail, but I know that this is the basic criteria and you have to look at all of this in terms of meeting the setbacks to this new property line.
This is the part.
Right.
Again, for instance, in the, in this, the health regulations, health mark regulations, there's something like 15 feet, 15 feet to the edge of the septic system.
If you go to the dimensional table...
Does that count the building or does that count the actual place?
The total is small.
So, all right.
The reserve.
Right. So if you go to this, right here, you know, it's got H-M right here, you've got minimum side yard setback, that's it. Your hearing hours is 15, right?
Yeah, I suspect if you just push perpendicular, you'll have enough room, but again, this is just...
We go to this table here, you get your engineer to look at this table, we should go, and I mean, so let me...
2011 is the stage.
Yeah, it's not, this is not huge as far as...
Hey, Jim, is there enough, I'm sorry, is there enough frontage on the new naked lot?
There is.
There is.
It's not sort of...
Yeah, so, is there any other comments you have, Jim?
Well, again, there's, and again, I didn't do this in detail at this point because you were looking at it, but there is a buffer requirement because you have to assume that the new lot is a residential lot. If this was, if this was an existing lot, there'd be a buffer requirement from the commercial use to the next lot.
To the adjacent lot?
Adjacent lot, and I don't, again, I have to tell you, I'm not prepared.
So what you're saying is even though this, if I meet the setbacks of what they are, 15 or whatever it is, the 10 or the 15, you're saying there's still a 50-foot buffer?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying there's a buffer and I haven't found it because I haven't reviewed this other than, this is informational, I just asked to come in.
Is it a buffer to the house or is it a buffer to the lot?
It's a buffer between a commercial use and this property line.
And a residential lot.
No, the property line.
Property line.
Property line, let's do it residential, just a property line, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I know there's a big difference between their property line and the house because I worked on the house.
That's right, but it's, the new property line is creating this requirement, I believe. Again, I think if you just simply made the...
Commercial line.
Perpendicular, you're going to have enough to cover all of these issues, but I don't want to make a statement that affects the...
All right, so in order, well, what we're trying to do is, all right, so prepare your map to what he's stating, get it, can be invited first in a month, I'll give it to Jim to make a, to review it, to give us a memo on it, I'll send you the memo and come back at the December meeting. And is this, this is not going to require a public hearing?
Okay.
Who will?
Well, it requires one public hearing.
But it could be held, a public hearing could be held at the same time, we could actually act on it, we could close the public hearing and act on it if there's no, right? At the same meeting?
Well, you need to be sure that the application's complete, I don't know how you can do that in time to issue it.
You're right.
I think the hearing would have to be in January.
But at that hearing, we could close the hearing and act on it.
Right, okay, all right, I'll jump in.
Jim, I forget this, what does the county do as far as subdivisions, is there referral of subdivisions as well?
Yes, this will go to the county, that's what I'm saying, this...
Not every county?
All right, so it's going to be two meetings, minimum. We get it back this December, we can review it, we can make our recommendations, we can ship it up to the county, we can schedule a public hearing for January, and if all goes well, we can act on it.
The only thing I'm confused about is what the side yard and the rear yard is, because this is the rear yard.
There's going to be a provision for corner lots usually in the...
But this is not, this won't be the corner lot.
They actually, what happens is there's no rear yard, it's, they're both side yards.
The two front yards.
There's two front yards and two side yards.
So when I refer to the line, am I going to refer to in that code, the 10-foot side yard?
Side yard.
Side yard.
Good question.
But there's also going to be a different offset between the existing commercial use and the next lot, separate from the side yard.
Correct, and that's what I mean, I have not, once we get an application, then I can discover that.
That's the only thing I'm confused about.
I remember reading it one night, I think.
It is in there.
It is in there.
Because this could ultimately be, who knows, a commercial lot rather than, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So...
And if it does go commercial effectively, you end up with more area to develop on this lot as well.
Yeah, so if I meet the criteria from what you're saying, from the commercial to a residential, it hasn't been determined yet if it's residential, commercial, it's just asking to create a minor subdivision of two lots.
Right, but the, the used by right is, in this case, residential unless you warrant, unless you include stipulation in subdivision that it has to be developed commercially, then the board has to assume that this was a commercial lot adjacent to a residential lot.
Well, it's already a commercial lot.
New one residential.
The new lot's the residential.
The main lot is residential.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
And tell its main...
Residential in the, in the H-M district?
H-M district.
Oh. But we, I guess, you're making that determination not knowing what the future will be in the document of it.
You can kind of make it from the basis that if you imagine that lot line's already there, you know, is that a conforming lot based on the current requirements?
On, on what application, residential or...
Adjacent and adjacent residential property.
Can he get, can he go for an approval of a commercial only?
Sure.
And then you might not be subject to that if you want to...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it makes, if you simply set it up perpendicular, I think you've covered, you know, my sense is you've covered all bases, setback to the driveway, a setback to the fields.
Whatever it may be in the near future, residential, commercial.
Whatever.
It's perpendicular.
Because no matter what, it has to be set up perpendicular to the street.
Okay.
So you got that anyway, no matter what, you got to move that, it's perpendicular, so do that.
I want to tell you with certainly...
Whether it's residential or commercial.
Yeah, it's perpendicular, so just start there and then if you already meet all, the other ones go away.
All right, Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
You're a good plan. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. The board, thank you.
Moving right along here with the agenda, do we have minutes to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
They just came out this afternoon.
I haven't seen it.
Well, they were sent to you.
They were sent to me by email this afternoon.
Yeah, but it was...
Right, okay.
I'm not prepared to approve.
I'm not prepared, and I'm going to have some questions about this.
Okay, that's fine, submit your questions and comments to us on, so by email so that we can...
Okay.
Review them before the meeting.
Okay.
We are going to be, we are going to be acting on June, July, August, September, October, and next week.
Carol, is it June?
That went to your AOL, are you still using that email?
Can I ask for, to also go to Gmail?
Yeah, it didn't go there, just so let me...
Yeah, it's now relying on Gmail.
How did you get minutes? Which ones are you looking for?
Did you see an email came out this afternoon with minutes?
There were.
Did you get them? I don't know that I, it was like 1:30 this afternoon.
Oh, yeah. I also, I have to give down something else, I'd like to make sure that I'm on the mailing list for any go down to the board.
Yeah, if you are, but for some reason today she didn't do that. We are, we're struggling with some certain aspects of our email.
Well, I didn't receive that either.
Are you able to see on CC if I was, CC them?
It's going to be a group email for this.
Okay, so, we're pushing it and we need to review just emails, okay.
Thank you.
John Friedel, Josh, he was...
Jim was on it.
What did I do?
I went, not you, but would you add me please to the group email list?
Carol's not on it either.
Carol's not, but her whole address is... If I reply, I try and reply all, I might...
No, I don't mean you, John, I didn't receive the minutes electronic.
Oh, you didn't?
Do you want to just write it? Yes. Write it.
Yes, I have to add on for you.
Uh, Joe.
And Joe Hayes, love you money, my email too.
Okay.
It says that particular email that she's using because I think she's got several in here because I know that she has email.
Right. That happens, I'm not to know, at one point you change your email, every once in a while I try to type something to you and it comes up.
Because your machine...
Oh, you opt online.
Okay, so while, while you're all around working on this issue of email, I appreciate the help with that, obviously, but there's a memorandum that came from the supervisor, did everybody get a chance to look at that today?
Stay, stay careful.
There's a memorandum that I circulated today from the supervisor that should be in your package.
It's in the package, yeah.
Do you have it?
It came with us, in a separate packet.
I just gave it out tonight.
Yeah, about the joint meeting.
Right, so I, everybody needs, everybody needs to be aware that this meeting is being held with or without you, but it's important that you try to attend, December 5th, and it's, so Mary Beth has given you a draft agenda.
Yes, it's good.
Okay, please take a chance, please take time to review it.
Harmless.
Make every effort to attend, obviously if there's a cell storm, it'd be really good.
It's 7:00 PM, right?
7:00 PM, December 5th.
So, they're not having a workshop meeting, it's just going to be us? No, no, it's a workshop of planning board, CBA, town...
But they're not going to do the town business first and then deal with us?
This is a separate, it's a Monday, don't you think?
No, it's a Tuesday, it's a regular Tuesday meeting.
So usually they do like town stuff.
He has to bear that, I don't know.
So there's any pressure to stand over.
Okay, so, again, again, I'd like to get the board's attention, there's also in your package that was downstairs today, you should also receive the fact that the annual Association for Town meeting taking place February, there isn't an agenda yet, but there is obviously early registration. I encourage everybody to review that and sign up if you're looking for the credits that you need.
Where is that?
The New York City Association, Mary Beth every year.
Oh, okay.
All right, that's all I have.
In addition to the agenda there, you informed me that the Solar Farm project will be on, so...
Stay in.
I'm not sure where your reviews are.
According to Mary Beth, if you want to confirm with her, that she's not going to hold a separate meeting for Cypress Creek.
That's my understanding.
She's going to have, Cypress Creek will be at that meeting, at the December 5th meeting, and at that time, they can, apparently she's going to allow it to speak or present, I'm not sure, but there's going to be some discussion with Cypress Creek.
I think that the purpose of that meeting was to resolve the procedure for processing the...
That's part of it.
That's not all of the law. Well, there's, there's, well, there's three boards that all have a role, and so money and discussion about who wants to be lead agency is probably the biggest question, and just to have everybody in the same room give everybody the, here's what's coming.
Okay.
So, it's maybe a quick overview and drive, give them the structure of the process.
All right, so with no further comments from the board, if anybody, do you have a comment?
Just that, the, you said that, that should be signed and the one is not put, which, the negative declaration...
Yeah, I've got, I've got some, that's...
You'll have to sign it and then you'll...
I've got two, I'll take one and you can keep one.
She has to just stand filed or something back then, and she needs to be put in, into